In the room, so there was no way for me to respond, just so you know.
It's a funny name.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you all for being here to RS two thirteen board workshop for tonight. And let's say a few things. First of all, tomorrow, we're sending out. I decided to do an appreciation of our wonderful staff and sending out a video. From me and Brad wrote up a wonderful resolve that they'll be getting as well. And so you'll be getting copies of that, too. Tonight, we're just going to have a brief update from John on what Dr. Shaw said this week. Just to get an update on if you haven't heard that. You know, no major changes, but just John can do a brief update on what his message was. And then we'll talk about the facilities. I think Pete has a big presentation for that. And we'll finish the evening with a discussion of nine alliance staff. So, John, if you can go ahead and give us that brief summary of what Dr. Shaw was saying this week, please.
Certainly. So, Dr. Shaw has been meeting on basically a weekly basis. With the regional presidents of the superintendent groups. To have a give and take and a discussion about the COVID protocols and. The future of the COVID protocols. Just recently, you may have seen there was a press release. A couple of things have happened. One. They decoupled. Contact tracing with a universal masking policy. So you no longer have to. Contact trace if you do not. Have a universal masking policy. However, what's? Wasn't as clear in the articles and the press release is that the quarantine provisions. Of the standard operating procedure are still coupled. To a universal masking policy. So in other words, since we have our universal masking policies. The quarantine protocols are not as lengthy. As they would be if we did not. He also said that because the case rates are dropping so significantly. That after the break, he's going to give it two weeks to see if we have some kind of a surge. And that if we're still trending in the right direction, which is downward. That he could recommend that masking become optional. So that's where that stands at this point. You can all read the articles. They've been numerous. Articles in New Center, Soup, and so on and so forth. I'm so glad that Dr. Shaw is communicating with superintendents. It's really helped to sort of cut out all the. All the red tape, so to speak, of getting these communications. So that's a really, really positive thing. And let's keep our fingers crossed that our case numbers continue to go down. They've been dropping significantly. Back in January, we were spiking over seventy cases and now we're down under ten. For the week. So that's a great, very, very hopeful. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, yeah, Mark, how you doing? So Pete, before you get going, Steve Sylvester, if you could introduce yourself, some people may not know you yet. So.
Hi, everyone. Steve Sylvester, Director of Facilities RSU thirteen. I've been here for. Thirteen years now and look forward to the next step here in the revolving renovation fund.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, Pete.
So I thought it was important that Steve be here and also give him the opportunity to make the presentation tonight. There he goes.
He doesn't know that.
No, I told him he had nothing. He just had to be here. I can see the delay.
Good one, Pete.
Yeah, well, sorry about that. Okay. So if it's okay with you, I'm gonna share my screen. And find the right one. I'm hoping that you can see the.
Yeah, we see.
Okay. So the. The basic, the idea behind this workshop was to kind of go over the revolving renovation fund. Projects that were approved by the DOE last week or about, I guess about ten, two weeks ago now. And delve a little bit, kind of understand the program. And how they might be affordable. If the board chooses to go forward with them. Also, I wanted to kind of, this opportunity to kind of go over the facilities. In general, and kind of at least at a very high level, at, you know, I hope your level as a board. But, you know, this is kind of a work in progress, but this is kind of the vision of the facilities department. To maintain the safest and cleanest environment for staff, students, and community. And that's kind of, again, work in progress, but we're trying to kind of have a vision. For each one of our departments that we can kind of. Measure everything we do. The. This is kind of a summary, and I didn't give credit for all the places that I may have borrowed some of the language from, but this is. More of the operational part of. The department, as well as. What I would consider the piece of this department that goes into our annual operating budget. Which is maintaining all of our equipment. Scheduling all repairs and further maintenance. Using schedules. We detail that by year, by manufacturer, depending on what the items are. Keeping in mind that we, you know, the older equipment tends to cost more and needs more frequent repair. Providing contingency or unanticipated replacements, looking at historic data. Considering the average age of some of our equipment when doing so. And we do do that already. That's kind of part of our budgeting process, looking at historical numbers. What we haven't done yet is, and we keep looking at a program that will help us do this, it will also help us with our capital improvement. Planning is using a software program that helps us schedule equipment maintenance. Inspections on buildings. As well as any other assets we have in the district. This is your part of, you know, my daily job is looking at, you know, the cost benefit behind repairing versus replacing certain items. We have a lot of newer equipment now, so we do do a lot more repairs than we do in the past. We. I'd say when I first started doing this, when Steve first got into his role, we had to replace things because things were just so old, they couldn't be repaired anymore. Watching for higher budgetary variances, and that could be anywhere from, you know, utilities to repairs and maintenance costs on certain. On certain types of. Equipment that we use, either custodial or maintenance, snowplows, still blowers. And then we use this kind of to plan the budgeting. And so this is, this is, you know, what I think is. As our general fund facilities budget process, or at least what goes into that budget process in addition to people. Something that we've been really kind of focusing on in terms of the finance committee and facilities committee is really working towards a. A substantive capital improvement plan. Which is a multi-year plan of proposed capital outlays and related financing of infrastructure. Such as a construction or renovation of buildings, streets and sidewalks, water and sewer, sports field, as well as a purchase of major equipment. So that's kind of in a nutshell, what the capital improvement plan would be. It's. It's different than the operational budget. What's that? Okay. It usually, it's the acquisition, design, and construction or renovation of our building and facilities, equipment, vehicles. Usually, it's expenditures that go on that are, that take place and occur beyond a single year or last over a single year. They're often funded with debt, or in our case, sometimes capital leases. And that, the purpose of that is to share the cost of a piece of equipment or capital expenditure with the. With those who benefit in the future. And that's really kind of why we fund that way, as opposed to. Saving money ahead of time to buy something. The thought process here is that. Those individuals that benefit from the purchase should share in the cost. I think we. We don't ignore the fact that it was better, you know, save a little bit and not, and be ready for unanticipated expenses, but I think with some of the big. Major expenses, that's. As a. Way of thinking that I, it took me a while to come to grips with, but I've certainly come to embrace. It's systematic. It involves scheduling replacement and repair of physical assets, including roofs, other structures. You know, playgrounds, things that do wear out. There's a specific value, I think, that we would consider for a capital budgeting. Whether it's twenty five thousand or fifty thousand or hundred thousand, that's kind of up to the board to decide what that might be. And usually, have a longer useful life, and five years or more. And then what we do is that we identify the need, but then we also have to identify. How something is going to be funded. And that's really goes hand in hand, and you can't do one without the other. These are kind of parts of the process of. Putting together a study, and Chelsea's quite aware of this. She's been really an advocate of having us do a comprehensive study of the district. For facilities. And really is going through and working with professionals to kind of identify the condition of all of our facilities, all of our equipment. And even going so far as to what we're using the buildings for. Some, you know, listing of some of the things that are included in that, and then considering the age and expected life, wear and tear, and. The plan should be really at least of, at least probably a five-year plan, probably really more likely a ten to twenty, twenty-year plan. Is what I would want to have, because a lot of this is predictable. Something that I think the committee, the finance committee and facilities committee will kind of work towards, and maybe the board should consider is your policy. To, you know, kind of help define what a capital project is. You know, I think that. Lauren and Carol are quite aware that it's really easy through the budget process to. To eliminate projects that. Might be deferable. At least in terms of, you know, we can't spend money on the roof this year, but, you know, we can get, we can get one more year out of it. And then, but I think it's, you know. Like, we know how easy those, those big items can get cut. To have the budget balanced, and I think maybe a policy. Might help us, might help the board, actually, in some of that decision-making, to make sure that we don't. Defer maintenance too much, or that we don't defer it inappropriately, kind of the way I think. In my opinion, it had been done for a lot of years. I think that when, when we started here eight years ago. There was a lot of opportunity for improvement in facilities, and I think a lot of that was just done because. Of deferred maintenance. I think we've really come a long way. And. And cleaned up some of the issues that we've had. I think that we've lowered the kind of the average age of our facilities. And have lowered the average cost of our operating costs in our facilities. And the other thing that the finance should just consider is a debt policy and how. What's the appropriate level of debt, considering the size of our district? And if, you know, debt is a tool. But to me, your debt is a, you know. The using of debt to purchase long-term assets. Is a good thing to a point. Because I think the addition of debt often reduces the cost of other things, reduces, you know, the cost of repairs and maintenance. I think we've seen that. You know, when we look at the facilities article in terms of our budget and the debt article in terms of our budget. The two together. Have varied a whole lot. Debt has gone up, but facilities has gone down. And I think when I look at the two, I look at them together because they complement each other, and they're very related that. You know, the addition of debt actually reduced the operating cost in that facilities article. The capital improvement plan, I'm not going to go into it, but I've shared with you over the email this afternoon, an Excel sheet that Steve is working on. That is, it's an old version of it, but he's been kind of keeping that up to date with projects that he sees by building. So feel free to see where we are in the process. I think we've got a long way to go, but he, Steve knows where we're going, and. He's just now working on making sure that we can put that on paper and really. So that finance facilities and the board can make some strategic decisions going forward. So that's really kind of, you know, I thought I'd just take the opportunity to kind of. Digress into that a little bit before we got into the revolving renovation fund. So. If there's no real questions about that, I'll just continue on and we'll kind of plug away on the revolving renovation.
Just kind of encourage people to put this PDF or somewhere in your computer somewhere, because in addition to the few others we've had just recently, they're really foundational. To how we do our job. So thanks for that, Pete, and what's coming up too. But I mean, it's just great to have foundational information. You can quickly get your fingers on and look at and read when you need to.
Pete, I want to ask at some point about that debt facility ratio. Is this a good time to do it, or would you rather do it later?
Something we can do later. It's, when I look at, you know, I look at, if you were to go on the DOE website and look at. Our expenditures by article, by school system, you can look at the statewide average and. School district average is, you know, I think that, I can't remember the numbers offhand, but I believe the average in the state is around. Eight percent of their budget is for debt. And we were in the neighborhood of, you know, one or two percent back six years ago, which was really, really low. But our operational cost in facilities was very, very high. So the board. Made a strategic decision to. To. Make some major investments in the school system, including, you know, the realignment of the grade levels, closing some schools and kind of rightsizing the district. But also by doing that, lowering some expenses, but also knowing that we've increased the debt by, and by lowering the average age of our buildings and kind of extending the useful life of the buildings that we had. But I think that I, if numbers, if I can remember the right numbers, I think, I think I've kind of. Planned long-term to keep that number. In the six to eight percent range. Because I do think that there'll be times over the years that we'll need to do. Ask for a bond to do major repairs on roofs or other items that I just don't even know about right now, but that's what Steve's working on with his plan.
And a quick question, when we talk about debt, does that, is that just district-wide debt, or does that also capture the tech school debt? Because I know in some places it's separate and in some places it's not.
It, if you look, if you look at our art, if you look at our budget, our debt article does include the midcoast school technology debt. And that's going to throw our numbers off a little bit. We can, we. So, yeah, I hadn't, you're right. I forgot about that. That will throw the number up. We kind of ignore that, we don't ignore it, but we, I think, because we had such an opportunity with that building. Because the funding formula changed the exact same year that debt became liability for us. So we went, we went from spending half a million dollars a year on midcoast school technology operating costs. To a half million dollars a year on debt. Instead of a million dollars of both, which is what we expected to pay. So, but you're right, that does, that, that, that should be kind of taken out of that to kind of look at our. Actual costs, because that was voted on by the voters of a much bigger area than just our five towns.
Question, Pete?
Yep.
What is our average interest rate, or what is our general interest rate on our debt?
We. I believe that when we did the Schools of Our Future, with the. The total of the thirty one million dollars. I believe our goal was to do it at under three percent at that point, and I believe that we came in around. Two point five or two point six percent, I think. So the total, you know, all of our funding mechanisms. Which were capital lease for part of it, it was for two issues, two public issues with. With US Bank, or it was Merrill Lynch, I guess, was one of the buyers, and I think Goldman Sachs was the second buyer. With, at that point, we did a revolving renovation fund loan for about half a million dollars. We also did something called. QZAB. Something Zone, Qualified Zone Academy Bond, which is also zero interest rate debt. So we. We use a bunch of vehicles to get our average rate down to well below three percent.
So we have some at zero?
We have some negative. So the revolving renovation, I would consider a negative interest rate because we're paying back less than we borrowed.
But that's through grants, right?
Well, it's through a forgiveness program by the state.
Yeah, so the state's paying it.
They did. They did pay for it, and then, and then we repay part of that, and that money goes back into this fund again. But that was, that was kind of really what was going on behind the scenes when we were looking to. Really fund the Schools of Our Future, that we were combining savings that we were seeing from operational savings from, you know, closing some buildings. Making some buildings newer and less costly by energy efficiency. Which was. Substantial, but also we lost on the other side because we also added air quality and air handling, which actually was, which was actually a cost to us, which, which. Kind of reduced the savings part of the, of the other side of that equation. Then, again, with the different loans that we were able to. Get, we were able to kind of get that blended interest rate way down to something reasonable at the time.
Pete had a question regarding, well, and I don't want to. Steal your thunder, this may be down the line, but I was wondering about if your discussion is going to include improvements. Or upgrades as opposed to just renovations. I see a fine line there, but. Are we, is that something you're talking about down the line in your presentation tonight? I'm thinking more specifically about. We had a presentation, I remember years ago, when we first opened up Ash Point about solar. And that.
So, yeah, I'll get to that at the end.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure.
It's not going to be, it's not a, it's something that I think will end, will end tight with some of those ideas. And that's where I think, you know, the board kind of discussed some of those priorities, but I had that kind of, that'll be the last slide, I believe. So when you see that, you know it's over.
I think, I think, I think it might need to be revisited though, because with, I'm just listening to NPR this morning, as well as Main Public Radio about. Energy costs and electric going like through the roof, and how is that going to affect us budget-wise, keeping the light on as well as. Going on, going further down the road. They don't, they don't see this getting better anytime soon. So I didn't know how this is all going to affect us going forward, so.
It will clearly affect us.
Thought so. Thank you.
So the, this is, you know, I think most of you have seen this before. This is really for, as Lauren said, somebody who wanted to go back and kind of look at the basics of this whole program. The School Revolving Renovation Fund, the SRRF, provides funding assistance to school administrative units, SAUs. To ensure that students have a safe, healthy, and appropriate learning environment. It offers funding where SAUs have identified needs in the areas of health and safety, building systems, energy and water conservation, and learning space upgrades. That's the. Intent of the money. The reality is, they prioritize different projects or improvements. Priority one is health and safety, compliance issues, including roof structural upgrades, not just, you know, repairing roofs or re-roofing. Improvements to indoor air quality, compliance with ADA, and hazardous material abatement or removal. And other health, safety, and compliance issues. That's priority one. That's generally the only level that ever gets funded. Through these programs that I've seen, I think, for the three times that I've seen the money become available. Priority two, repairs and improvements not related to health, safety, and compliance, limited to repairs and improvements to school building structures, windows, doors, and water supply or waste disposal systems. They did fund priority two. Depending on how your project was rated, they have a rating system that they go through and identify. On a scale from under a hundred, what that is, and you'll see that on one of the documents, you'll see the rating system and all the projects that were approved at the state level. I sent that along. Priority three, repairs and improvements related to energy and water conservation. For learning spaces, which could be expansion of pre-K, which might be one, and other projects. Again. I'm glad they have these priorities, but I've never seen them funded. So the fund provides loans. This is a loan program. And. A portion of each loan is forgiven, and that is based on the. Percent of subsidy that the district as a whole gets, not each community. So it's, it's a. Because we get about thirty percent subsidy as a whole district, each town is different from zero to forty-five percent. But it's a blended number is right around thirty percent. The minimum any district could get, whether it be Camden Rock Ward or. Any other town is thirty. So we're actually receiving just about the minimum. That even a town that a community does not get any subsidy would get. Again, I go into my funding formula discussion, but. I'm not sure we have time for that tonight. The loans, the loan, the portion that we, that we get, that we pay back is over five or 10 years. We always choose ten to minimize the impact of these loans. And at zero percent, there's no reason not to. And those, that money goes back into the revolving renovation fund to reloan at the next round. That the state has. And the maximum loan amount is capped at a million dollars per priority per school. Within any five-year period. So we've been five years since our last one, so it looks as though we were able to maximize Oceanside High School, which was the school that we actually received money from. For the sprinkler addition at the high school back in two thousand seventeen. Timeline, everything is small, has been, is already passed. In February, we, beginning this month, we received our eligibility certificates. Each one of our approved projects was listed. We have until July thirty first to complete our loan application for the. For the money, if we choose to go forward with this, with the main municipal bond bank. Which is the mechanism to borrow money. For towns and water systems and for schools. It's generally a higher, we don't usually use it for our privately funded because it's a higher rate. It's less work for the business office, but it's at a higher rate and. We chose not to with our big loans, because there was substantial savings to the taxpayer by not doing it. But with zero percent, and this program requires it, there's no difference. So we'll, we'll use the bond bank for this, because we have to. And they're great to work with. And it's good for small loans, too. Now that this is a small one. And then by September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, we have to have finished all of these projects. So we get twenty months from the day you're approved to completion. And a lot of things have to go on between those twenty months, especially in these first six months while we get the application. Approved, and we go through the other, the other. List of to-dos that are right here. are right here. So within 30 days of the award date, we start, we contact the main municipal bond bank, which I've done. We begin, we begin the loan application process, which I have not yet done. I have I have the document and I have my old document to to use. I'm in the process of collecting town reports and town audits from our five communities, because really the this the credit strength of our RSU is not just our credit strength, it's the credit strength of the five communities behind us, because that's really where our funding comes from. So it's really, it's a complex application that uses kind of the six different entities, the five communities plus ours. Plus the RSU. And then, like I said, we've got to close that within six months, or the award is forfeited. What we have now to plan for is if the board wants to go forward with this is we need to have a referendum, a public referendum within six months. Or by the time we get the loan closing. So right now, I think we can plan to do that during our budget referendum in June. I think that still works. Our application will be complete by July. We need to procure our construction services through a competitive bid process. We can use the architects that we chose in the in the RFQ process with the architects. And that we did the actual walkthrough for these projects and submit it to the to the state on our behalf. And I also included all the reports that they have compiled on the buildings through the walkthrough that we did in October in that email. Again, nothing, nothing we're going to refer to tonight, but it's there for your pictures. It kind of goes through the projects in more detail as they saw them back in October. And then it's like other federal grants, we spend the money and then we get reimbursed for once we submit our paid invoices. So we, the RSU fronts the money and then gets reimbursed for it. And again, gotta be done by 20 months. So something for Steve to, you know, lose sleep over because finding contractors these days is the easiest thing in the world. So this is I've given you this information in different formats, I think, over the last couple of weeks. What I did was here, I I sorted them by by building. I also identified the priority ones and twos. So you can kind of see visually, green is one, two, blue is two. And the buildings are listed in no particular order. I guess rough medical. No, they're not. Math, not spelling is my strength. The the details are on the I want to get attached sheets, but this kind of goes through what was what the projects entailed and what the cost was. The ADA compliance at the high school with a lot of bathrooms, sinks and doors, mostly at the obviously not in the new end of the building, but at the far end of the building is where a lot of that is happening. Total project is, you know, $670,000. It was all deemed eligible. And the amount that the bond repayment amount for that would be is $450,000. So the other 219 is is the amount that's that's waived is for is forgiven by the state. That's what those columns are. Total project, the eligible amount, which is usually in most cases, the same. But that is where it also reaches that $1 million threshold in some of those cases, in one of those cases. And then the subsidized subsidized bond amount is actually what we have to pay back. And the additional local would be the difference between the total project cost and the eligible amount that is deemed by the DOE. Second project is flooring, and we have areas of the building that have asbestos tiles that we have estimated the cost to be $210,000. That would be completely removed and replaced with their inner tiles to match the rest of the building. And then the window project is actually the completion of a project that we began back in 16, I believe, to complete the rest of the high school windows, including the the big window wall in the gym. We we only did about half the windows because we reached the threshold of that building for one of the other types of financing that we had at that time. And we chose the most impactful windows in terms of saving money, saving money with air quality and ventilation. This would replace the rest of them. These were, this is the second, the second phase of that. We've always been planning to do it. Personally, I think that we could probably do it for less than the total project amount, because we've been working with Portland Glass over the last couple of years on maintaining that estimate. We've been trying to kind of go through every couple of years and make sure that they still have this on their radar. So only a million of it was really eligible for the program. So we pay back 670 out of that, out of that million. And then if the total project actually is 1.48 million, we would have to borrow an additional $491,000 outside of this program to pay for that. And you'll see that later on. I have a an estimate of a half million dollar additional bond over 20 years as opposed to the zero percent over 10 years. Middle school, it includes some interior work around the stages, the stage with ramps and lifts. There's also an area that a doorway would have to be fixed because wheelchair can't even actually, a human can't can almost not get through the angle in that one area. It also deals with some access problems that we have with the fields behind the middle school, with the the rickety staircase and some ramps. So this would actually bring the fields and allow ADA access to our upper fields behind the middle school, which are really beautiful. And then some other exterior doors that we've just never, we've, it's been on the list, but we just have not been able to, you know, kind of come up with the money to really just tear out those front doors and replace them. They've been really a problem for us for a long, long time. At least eight years that I've been here. Thomas and Grammar School, a lot of work at Thomas and Grammar School, ADA compliance, a lot of this is for the connecting between the Thomas and Grammar School and Oceanside Middle School. So it actually affects both schools because each school is the other school's emergency area in case of of an issue. They evacuate there. So this actually makes that that makes that ADA compliant and a much safer use of that space, use of that that egress. It also includes making the playgrounds more ADA accessible. But the they definitely a lot of areas in that school that were deficient and could be improved upon with ADA compliance. We also have found through COVID and through our kind of our mantra of just if we see something that's air quality related, we fix it. We did keep seeing things in Thomas and Grammar School that we didn't understand. So we've been able to identify some of the issues there. It's just, it's an old system that depends on certain doors being open and certain doors being closed. And if they're done wrong, things break. It's a, it's an even wackier system than the crack ventilation system that we saw in the other schools. There's also skylights that cause some heat issues and stagnant air upstairs. But this would address all of those issues, including the tier two projects of replacing a lot of the windows that need to be replaced in that one in that building. South School, same ADA compliance ramps and doors is mostly what it is. I think the bathrooms there were not an issue. Exterior doors, we've got the same issue with exterior doors and some of the, some of the areas as we do at the middle school, they're just old. And they just, they don't shut right. And then this would actually allow us to put a a real secure set of doors in our buildings to make sure that they are not accessible with by intruders or that they don't know that that they can't be pushed open in some cases. We've had, we've had, we did have a break in once. That was, I think, probably could be tracked traced to 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 one of these sets of doors. But they'll all be replaced. And a great deal of money is really going into the portion of what was Rockland District Middle School, the newer side of the of the complex, where we have brickwork and we have this woodwork siding that was just subpar, either in material or in construction when it was built, that is now kind of gathering water and causing what we believe to be some air quality issues that the state has approved this to be to be done. And this will be a huge improvement to the school. Something is something that John identified a long time ago as something that really needed to be done. And you can see it's it's tier two from the state's point of view, even though it's air quality. But it's a, it's going to make a huge difference to our schools. And
This is a really helpful chart, Pete. It's so clear.
Sorry. I can't find my cough button, like the radio station days. I think I think I've lost my cough for now. Okay. So the total cost of the projects as submitted to the state was $5.69 million at the very bottom for the center of the of the screen, if you can see it. And the total cost to the district is just under $4 million, 3.95 million. And that includes the subsidized amount, the the 70% of the project cost of the of the eligible project cost, plus the $491,000 of the additional local that the one window project would would add. So it's about 3.4 million of SRF money. And then a zero percent and then probably another $500,000 of of money that I'm estimating to be about about four percent. And I have, I've given you this in one of the attachments of the email. I've also given you the same information sorted by the type of project you see too, that are somewhat similar, but I have, I look at them, I look at them two ways. So like we kind of went into this and kind of questioned whether we would even apply because it's not a grant. I mean, it does require us to pay back. It's a loan. You know, although much of it's forgiven or a lot of it's forgiven, we still have to borrow money and we still have to pay it back. So my my rough estimate that I use is it's about $70,000 per year, per million, if you were to borrow money. So this, over 20 years, that would be about 280 million, $280,000 a year. Because the revolving renovation is actually a 10 year payout, it's going to be a little bit more. But real thumb, and I think the board felt that during the process that, you know, maybe it's time that we actually do consider this. If we do get approved, which wasn't even, we didn't think was a really that likely for a lot of reasons. But we did, we were, and now we have a decision to make as to whether we feel like this is something that we can afford to do. I think the quality of the projects and the importance of these projects kind of speaks to itself. I think the whole program is based on, you know, projects that need to be done. We went through it with the architects and we, you know, we have a lot more on our wish list than we actually could apply for. There's a lot more there on Steve's list, but we just couldn't do it. We couldn't, we we couldn't add, you know, the the roof at Cushing, which we'd love to be able to do that with some low cost money, because it would be great to convert that to a metal roof to accept solar at some point. South School has roof issues, but they weren't structural. So we 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 had projects that we couldn't, we wanted to apply for, but we just couldn't. So really, the key to me was, you know, the next piece of this, which is, you know, how are we going to pay for it? We can't just go, we can, I don't, we've never, we've never have just go into the taxpayer and say, here, this is what we want to do. This is what it costs. Yes or no? I think we've yes, every time we've wanted to do one of these projects, we've tried to identify the funding of it first, whether it would be through savings like we did with Schools of Our Future. Where now, I think what we have is we have identified a number of loans and long term capital leases that are expiring over the next two years that will actually allow this new money and necessary repairs to replace the expiring and ending old mine. So the this kind of goes through the numbers. The, this is the $346,000 per year is basically one tenth of the total amount that the state discounted out that the state has approved for us. If the window project comes in at that budget amount, we would have to borrow another $500,000 and four percent, that would be about $45,000 in the first year. And it would decrease after that because we have fixed principal payments with these notes, not like, we're not like your mortgage, we're to fix payment. So it actually goes down every, every year. So the total payment that would be in fiscal '24. So the idea would be to borrow this money as early as July 1, 2022, with the first payment being due July 1, 2023, as part of the fiscal '23, 24 budget, not next year's budget. So we actually have two years of ending leases and loans and bonds to allow us to offset the the $391,000 payment that would be in fiscal '24. We have a, the Cushing School loan is retiring this year. We have a lease on three vans that's expiring this year. We have the lease that finance the upgrades, the boardroom that's expiring this year. Like I said, our our bonds have fixed principal payments and interest rate goes down every month. So we see almost a $50,000 decrease in our interest every single year. So that's year one of that decrease that would be help the offset. And then we have a smaller bond that was done for some roofs and some other projects back all the tenants to us nine years ago. So just before John and I started, that was, it's some safety and security and a lot of roofs, I think, is what that purpose of that was. That's the reduction of that interest on that loan for this year. And then in fiscal '23, we have a loan on four buses that we purchased to catch up on some of our buses that we hadn't purchased in prior years because we didn't have the money for it. And that's expiring. We have a seven year lease on playgrounds that we put into to Thomas and Grammar School and South School. I believe two playgrounds that we installed and at least and did a capital lease on those. Again, the interest reduction on the series A and B, that's the the $21 million bond, bonds that we have. And then we have the final payment on the $500,000 bond. So that's the principal and interest. So with all the ending leases and bonds that we have in the next two years, next fiscal, still ending this year and ending next year, '22 and '23, that comes to about $375,000, which is about $16,000 short of what would make this a break even proposition. That said, in fiscal '24, when the bond payment starts, we will also still have other expiring notes. I didn't get into that whole piece, but we'll have at least $50,000 reduction in the interest rate again, in the interest payment again. So by fiscal '24, it was still our, we're not, we're still going to see a reduction overall of our of our debt payment account. So that's kind of So that, that's kind of how I've come up with a, um, the rationale for how this would be paid for. Go ahead, David.
Um, you have the, and the lease of three vans, final payment. Does that mean we lose the vans?
No, these are capital leases. These are, these are $1 capital leases. This is, yes. So we don't, we don't, this is not a lease like your auto lease that you would see uh, from a dealership. These are capital leases that, uh, we are the owner after the end of lease for a dollar. The, uh, it's a, it's a financing, it's a financing mechanism that, that, that schools and towns are allowed to do in Maine. Uh, the only, uh, and there, there's only a limited number of sources to borrow this money from because it does require that the lease has a non-appropriation clause. So if the communities of the district ever chose not to fund the district, it's not as simple as saying notable lease. If they chose not to fund facilities in general, the asset that, that secures the lease would be taken away, but it's, it's a, it's a security system that the banks have for this type of appropriation. Maria?
Um, in previous meetings, you had talked about the acquisition of several new buses. So, um, I can see that we're, you know, finishing up paying for, for buses, but we're going to have a corresponding, uh, payment for these new buses, correct?
I believe that we already have that built in. We, we only, this is, this, this, that was a one-time purchase that we had to catch up on some buses. We generally will, will buy two new buses a year and that's, that's usually built into the budget.
Okay. So we normally purchase outright purchase versus doing a, a capital lease.
No, usually we, we, uh, we do a capital lease, we do a five-year capital lease.
On the buses.
On the buses, but that's usually built into the budget under, under a separate line. This is, I'm going to have to double check that, but I believe that, uh, well, we'll, we'll, we'll see all that in the budget, in the budget process, but, um.
Okay.
There are, there are other mechanisms that we also have, uh, to offset this, but I, this was, this was the most obvious way of, of, of trying to make sure that these were reductions that lasted forever. So we didn't, so. Sorry, my phone was. So any questions about the financing? It's, yeah, this is, this is not, you know, set in stone, but this was kind of a, you know, I wanted to make sure that all of us were kind of at least somewhat comfortable with the fact that we weren't going to just try to go out and, and request, you know, a lot more money from the taxpayer. Well, we already know that we're going to see increases because of, uh, salaries, benefits, inflation, insurance already. Uh, but this is, this is where something I wanted to make sure that this was not going to be an additional burden on the taxpayer, you know, and try to reassure you that, that we don't think it will.
I do.
Want to say, God, just quickly say, Pete, just, you know, just a great job because you kind of have lulled me over the years, lulled me into realizing you'll make it work. So total trust in your incompetence, your ability to make these kinds of things work. And this is another example. I mean, this is, like I've said before, these projects we have to do. We had to do them one day and this loan program from the state is a great opportunity for us and taxpayers and our district. And to look at this and think like, you, we can basically afford this without any major changes. This is just great to see. So thank you.
Chelsea?
Yeah. So one of the column, one of the documents you gave the Finance and Facilities Committee, um, I just don't understand it. And so I wanted to see if I could, it has different numbers than what you're presenting. So I think I'm misreading it. So I just want to make.
So, so what I realized after talking to the bond bank is that what I kept thinking was this was going to be a, an increase or the first payment was going to be next year. So I had, so I had a much tighter window to try to figure out how we could do this without burdening the taxpayer.
So are you talking then about the, the document where you've got the prepay and the add debt?
Yeah, I did, I did. So I had, I had, so there's, there's different ways that we could, we could do this. You know, what I was thinking then was if, you know, if we took fund balance or uh, other sorts of money and prepaid some of the fiscal '23 changes one year ahead of time, it would, would have the same effect. Uh, it would affect our fund balance, but it would, it would, it would, it would not show up in the budget. We would, we would take up. You know, we still have, uh, just under $100,000 in the original, uh, bond money for, uh, the series A and B. Now, loans, uh, we could, we could use that money to kind of just pay the interest, uh, on that.
Oh, so there was a $155,000 reduction and then the addition of 126. So that's why.
So I was trying to, and so, so, you know, you can see that this is, because it's two years, it's actually going to, it's still, because we don't have a payment until fiscal '24. Fiscal '23 will actually see a, a decrease in terms of what we actually owe. And I, what I would, but I'm, you again, this will be part of the budget process. You know, what I might suggest is that we, is that we keep our bond payment, our, our payment of our debt flat and take that money and, and create a, um, almost like a sinking fund for bond payments and start accumulating that money a little bit one year ahead and pay it down and kind of, uh.
Accruing.
Yeah, we didn't accrue it and pay it, uh, but we, we'd kind of, and I don't want to, I don't, I hate seeing, you know, shocks to the budget and but, you know, I, I don't know. That's something, that's a budget, that's a budget discussion. That's, that's a strategy that really requires that it is. This is, this is more, this is the straightforward. I, I hope it's straightforward. It feels like a straightforward. It didn't require any kind of prepayments and that, 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 that's hard to understand for, for some people. I think this group will, I could explain it, but I, I wouldn't just, it, this is, these things end. These are actual reductions that I can see on paper right now, uh, that I can quantify and, uh, make the numbers work. So we're not increasing our debt load, our debt payment each year, as a result of this, these projects.
And then the other question I have, just because I was looking at that document and it says total payments of 3.238780. So let's just call that 3.2 million. And it says that, but when I look over at the year, the, the article summaries that we get in Finance and Facilities, it says our, um, debt payment, including MCST is 2.4 million roughly. So I, I don't know why I'm seeing two different numbers.
Oh, what we, um, the $8 million that we, that we, uh, borrowed for the, uh, energy and air quality projects.
Are in a separate spot.
It's a lease. That's actually a, a capital lease and not, not debt. So it's treated separately. It shows up differently on our financials. Uh, but I think in terms of conversation, you know, here or the public, it's debt. You know, it was placed with a bank. We have bond payments, it's, or lease payments, but it, it, it looks like debt, smells like debt. I think it's safe to call it debt, even though we don't, even though it's actually a lease.
And that's something we've been talking about in Finance and Facilities a little bit, the difference between sort of the way that the state asks us to organize information and the way that it actually is helpful to, to learn about. So that, that's good. So when we go back to that, that issue of how much of our budget should be debt, um, 8% would be about 2.6 million. Does that include capital leases or not?
It doesn't. Should it? No. I mean, it, we should, we should look at our capital lease in term, at least we should, we should be looking at our energy and air quality project as a, as part of that number. I think that would be a fair way of looking at it. But that's also why I look at, why I look at debt and facilities together because the lease payment does show up in facilities under the energy and air quality line. So, so there, there's a percent of facilities and debt together, I think, that we could also look at to make sure that we're on track with spending an appropriate amount. I don't, I don't want to get way out of whack. I think there are school systems where I'm living, where I'm, where I'm broadcasting from right now that have debt percentages that are very, very high. Yeah. It makes other spending look very, very low. I, 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 you know, next one looks, it makes, it looks like their general spending is low as a percentage of the budget. Not that matters. It's, it's really the results you get from the spending, uh, the percent, but, uh, I, I think, I, I don't mind being average in our, in Rockland. I think that, you know, it's good to be average. Financially, average.
Yeah, that's right.
Sorry.
And then I have one other question, but I don't think it's the right spot, but I just want to make sure that there will be a spot. If not, I'll ask.
So the only thing I have is that final slide that is going to tell, uh, Mark that we're pretty much onto the board part of this.
Okay. In that case, yeah, let me ask this question now. Um, so you sent the, the document that Steve made with the priorities to the whole board, but we've been over it a couple of times in Finance and Facilities. And so what I'm wondering is we, a lot of those projects, we were able to sort of check off with this, um, revolving renovation loan. What is left and where does that kind of fit into what we're thinking about? Because for instance, you mentioned the cushion roof, which didn't qualify for this program. And it, I mean, literally shingles are falling off of the cushion roof. So we're going to have to address some of these other issues. How does that play into the overall budget?
In the, it's, it's plays in the overall capital budget. And I think that over the next couple of months, as we are looking at the bonding of these projects, we should look to see if maybe there is an opportunity to borrow a little bit more than the $500,000 to fix some of those other low-hanging fruit type projects. Like a roof that's going to have to be done anyway. We're going to have to borrow money at some point. Uh, maybe this is the time to do it. So, uh, you know, I, I apologize. I took, I took the spreadsheet that Steve sent a long time ago and grabbed it today. I, I didn't even ask him for an updated version before I sent it. I just wanted to have, you know, kind of the, the board, the, the board members that had not seen that at all. I wanted them to see at least that we are starting with something, uh, that doesn't always feel like, you know, there's a plan here, but you know, Steve's got a plan and Steve's on top of a lot of these projects that, you know, we may, we talk about once in a while, but he's, he's talking about it all the time to himself and to his, his staff.
Right. And I definitely think having that document, this is the first year we've really been using that document as part of the, the finance stuff and it's fantastic. I guess the question that, what's really behind this question is I'm trying to figure out. So we're talking about this project not costing us any money. Um, and we're talking about what should our overall, um, like percentage of debt to budget and hello, um, which those ratios be? Um, but I feel like we still have some other projects that we haven't really unpacked yet. And so my question is, what are we actually looking at needing to borrow right now? And how are we paying for that? Particularly because I don't, we don't have budget numbers yet. So what are we actually looking at as a potential tax impact through all of this?
That really depends on the discussions over this couple of months about what capital projects we would like to include in the next year or two. You know, I think that, you know, any, any project that we do, if we're going to go to the, if we're going to go and borrow money for roofs, for, um, vehicles, for things that we might want to, that we, we might think either one, we have to because the current asset is failing like a roof. Or two purchases that will save us money in the long run, like possibly a fleet of snowplows instead of contracting that out or lawn mowers or, uh, equipment to, to keep our walkways safe, whatever that might be, whatever those projects might be. I think we just need to decide what we, what we want to do and when we want to do it. And the bonding of that project will not impact the budget in terms of its first payment until fiscal '24, fiscal '25, depending on how we actually, uh, borrow the money or finance it. So that's, so that's the piece of the, you know, we've got to identify the projects that we think are priorities. Um, and then identify the funding mechanism to accomplish those priorities. And the funding priorities might, the funding might be private funding or it might be, oh, grant funding for, for pieces of it. Uh, you know, I guess that should never be off the table. We should always keep looking at things like that. But I think that's, that's kind of the natural progression of the discussion that goes along with this discussion over the next couple of months is other, other projects that we think we should at this time try to include in parallel with the, or SRF borrowing. So if we borrow the 3.4 million from the school revolving renovation fund, do we want to borrow an additional 2 million over 20 years? Which would be $140,000 a year. Uh, about another hundred more than this would suggest to get another one and a half million dollars to do other projects that, and I'm just making up numbers as I go. I'm, I'm not sure what the roof's going to cost or, we have some estimates or Steve, Steve would probably know. I'm not going to ask him tonight, but, but, you know, I think that's, that's the, the natural progression of this conversation. As we go through the referendum process and determining the projects, uh, we have to make sure that we have enough money to, uh, get the modulars done properly. You know, we have a lot of grant funding for that. Hopefully, uh, the budgets that we've been working with is, is, is enough, if not a little high. But the market's crazy right now in terms of, you know, if you've seen the modular market in Maine is, is, is very hot. People are buying modulars because they can't get contractors. I'm not sure if that affects our modulars, but it was certainly had on that, that, that I noticed the other day.
We should buy their modulars when they're done with them.
They usually live in them.
I was thinking school systems.
Yeah, I know. No, that wasn't, it wasn't a school system article. It was all about like just modules in general.
Okay. I think that, um, Pete, we can talk about this more later, but it sounds like we should, this, this is a good conversation for our March Finance and Facilities to sort of follow up on the, where the SR, the revolving renovation fits in with those capital improvement plans.
What the SR money or the surfer money or they, yeah, this.
The acronyms.
COVID-1, COVID-2, COVID-3, and this is.
But now I don't remember what those were. I don't think, I don't think any of that, any of that actually worked.
I'm just going to quickly share this last screen if there's nothing else on the, on that. And this is kind of the, this kind of is, um, related to what we're just talking about in terms of other priorities. This is, this is more of the, can you see that? Yeah. These are, this is the non-emergency priorities. And this is not the roofs. These are other things that we've just talked about. As a board and as administrative group of things that are worth considering. Uh, we've talked about the Waske Field and Track. I think we have fields that are, we've got some, we, we have some gorgeous property in this, in this district. Behind the high school, we have, you know, the field hockey field up there. The middle school has a gorgeous, it is an old high school. So the, the, the space back there is actually really, um, incredible. It's, you know, there's actually a track up there. I didn't realize there was a track up there around the field. That's a little overgrown, but it, but it could be, you know, brought back and there's certainly the room for one. Thompson Grammar School has a huge piece of property behind the school that, um, is wet. And I'm not sure how, how often it's wet, but it's, it's certainly usable property for both that whole middle school and, and Thomas and Grammar Campus. The, uh, the Oceanside Center for Performing Arts. Or, you know, sponsors named to be inserted wherever it's appropriate for funding. Our gyms, uh, and our bleachers need, uh, will need work eventually. Either the floor of the high school will need work eventually. Uh, the bleachers, some of our bleachers need repairing now. Uh, we've, uh, we're, we're pursuing. We were pursuing discussion about. Solar at the Ash Point School in a cushion community school. So that goes to your 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 question mark, you know, we certainly are considering this. But these are, you know. Projects to consider now or consider later, but I think these are, these are ones that. Are kind of. In the board's hands to. Help us kind of. Focus our energies. This is what, you know, the board's priority is and then, you know, once we get the priorities. We'll 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 bring the essential priorities like the roofs and the and Steve's projects to you, but these are bigger. Visionary priorities that I think. Personally, I think the board should probably. Lead us on. What?
I know that. I am personally committed to the Center for the Performing Arts. I am. I, you know, if we had. Something. In writing with the design as to what we need, what we would have planned to do. How much it would cost. I I will just beat the drums. I don't, I'll just go wherever it takes, uh, because I don't think. That we have to pass that on to voters, taxpayers. I think we can find the money in the community eventually. Eventually for people in the community who are, you know, supporters to see what we're doing, what we're doing for our staff and students. And to invest. Some of their resources to make that happen. Because that high school is nearly finished. We took a really, really old building and we've renovated to be a remarkably wonderful high school for our staff and students. And we finished those windows. We do some other things and we have a center for the performing arts. We have. A great building for our staff and our students and our community. So. I just want you all to know that I I will continue to. Do whatever I can over time. To get that for. Our kids and our staff.
All of those improvements we've been talking about for years and I am. All behind, but I think given current circumstances. With electrical costs going up 80%. And more, and I think. I I'm not sure how that affects us if we have any kind of. Break or how that how we price out on that, but. I think the the solar has to get moved to the head of the line on that and whether it's through. Tax breaks that may be available or or some kind of grants or whatnot, but I I think we need to. Move on that because, uh, you know, 80% is not insignificant. 50% is not insignificant and I I I don't know. Uh, how that's going to affect us in the next couple of years, but uh, I think it's time to revisit those. That we talked about a few years back and and see if we can get the get moving on that because. And they and they even talked about the, there was a bunch of guys from the. Uh, state who were talking on Jennifer Rooks program the other night saying, uh, you know, a lot of this is driven because of fossil fuels. And in our dependency on uh, uh, natural gas. And they want to move us to a a solar and wind. And but that's that's a glacial move and I think we should probably try to. Uh, move quicker on that rather than waiting for the state to lead us on that, but that's me.
You know, Pete has some good information on our our electrical rates, at least for a second, but what I wanted to piggyback on. Mark is that also when we're doing the modular projects, I think. We're probably going to have a choice of whether or not we want to get one mod, one model or a more energy efficient model. And I think that we need to strongly think about the long term fuel costs and whether or not we can reduce our usage. Um, in addition to, I I'm a huge fan of solar as well, but um, I think that's that's a conversation we really need to be thinking about with the modular project as well.
And I think given the the jump in the rates and and I think this is presented to us from the guys from. Uh, from the company that made the presentation to us all those years ago. This could, I think, literally pay for itself. You know, given what we'll end up spending on regular electrical rates versus. What the the installation and and what the savings on solar would be uh, over time. So, uh, yeah, this is definitely a. As I say, a long term thing we need to think about, but think about quickly.
Yeah, this, well, the savings, the savings come from the differential between the costs that you're paying one provider. To the solar cost and obviously the differential. Is becoming greater and greater, encouraging. This conversation, it wouldn't, it didn't happen back then because. The differential didn't make it. Financially worthwhile for the district at that point. It it could be now, but it's also, I think, prudent to make sure that. That. Long, it's a long term benefit. So whether it be. A power purchase agreement just to get the, just to get the actual savings, you can actually just buy those, you know, that eight cents differential you still, you can pay market price. But get the eight cent differential from the part of the power agreement for for solar. Where you just, you'll. Make your own solar. We couldn't make it all. We have a little bit of time. I'm trying to figure out where, you know. I I did sign a contract years ago and it's. Keep talking about it never ending, but it's going to end at some point, but we're, you know, we're. We 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 barely pay five cents kilowatt hour right now. And. I would guess that there's probably very few. Organizations in the state that are paying as little as we are for electricity right now. But. It's going to be a shock when it changes and that contract expires.
I would add two points here. One, one is that. Solar not only is is good economically, but I think pedagogically, it could be really useful. Um, it's great for us to be able to say we're saving this many trees or generating this much electricity and for the students to actually see that. I think it sends the right message in the community. On a second point. I'm wondering if there are opportunities to do fundraising for either solar or for the the. The Performing Arts Center or for other key. Initiatives that we'd like to see in terms of capital improvements at the school. You know, do we have any sort of efforts to sort of fundraise in the community? If assuming people can make tax deductible donations to the district and. And how does that work? And what sort of organization do we have to support that type of solicitation? If that's even even done here.
You know, I think the Performance Arts Center is something where we should concentrate those efforts completely. And it's a great. Way to do it. Um, it's a relatively low cost thing compared to the fields. The kind of renovations we need to ball fields and tracks and stuff is probably a whole lot more than. What we need to renovate the auditorium to make it a performing arts center. So. Something we've talked about many times in the past, but now that we're emerging, emerging, I believe from COVID. We can get back into doing those serious efforts. With our community to improve our schools, uh, facilities in that way. I just have felt like. For two years, it's all been on hold. Everything we talked about before, all the plans we had, all just completely on hold as we've dealt with this pandemic. But now that we're emerging. That's where exactly where we as a school board need to refocus on, you know, what is our now, what is our future? That's our job as a school board. Maria, go ahead.
I just wanted to to know if with all of the properties that, um. You know, Pete was describing how there's quite a bit of land at some of the facilities, the school facilities. Have you considered, um, ground mounted solar? As opposed to roof mounted?
We do, we don't, we don't have that much property to do it ourselves. We'd have to be part of a project. Elsewhere in the state and kind of be a shareholder of another project. The roof mounted is only really. Been part of our discussion really because the Ash Point School was built with that in mind.
Yeah, I know it faces south. It's beautiful.
The same thing with the Cushing School has the same south facing roof and it's a beautiful roof for solar. I'm not sure how much it would generate, but. Those were, those are just two obvious choices. Then we could do, we could do roof mounted at the high school too. We've talked about possibly a roof mounted at the high school. That would really depend on snow loads and and what that would do to us, some of the other infrastructure up there. But it also seemed to be solving. Carol's pet peeve of uh, those big vents up there. We could hide them with solar.
You know, you installed the metal roofing, so I think that was, um. You know, you you had some foresight there with the the metal roof. For sure. But I I was just wondering, I mean, you you did just describe. Some of the property is being expansive and I'm thinking that the wet property. Might. Work. I think you said that was the Thomaston Grammar School where the property is wet.
It's just not that, it's 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 big for kids, not big for solar.
Okay. All right.
That's my, that's my, that's just my take on that.
Chelsea, go ahead.
Mark, were you going to jump in on solar? Because I'm changing the topic a little bit.
Well, I was just going to bring up, uh, uh, very briefly, uh, and I think of Camden High School and that big windmill in the back there. And is that off the table? Is that something it's viable? How does that? Compared to, you know, how does Camden doing with that windmill versus solar and, uh, you know, that might be something else to consider as well.
I've got, I've got all, I've got their energy. I have all that information, you know, this, you know, the windmill was given, was given to them, was put up for free. Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to repair that the way they've had to repair it personally. You know, it's got a lot of moving parts in every. The uh, the solar, you know, they they just, they had a facilities director there, Keith Rose, who just. That was, that was his passion. And that's really how they got involved with that, even to the point where the new middle school was built with sewer thermal. So the the. So the heat for the middle school is being supplemented with the heat from the the sewer system. Or the treatment plant that's. Right over there across the street from me. With piping down under the field that actually keeps the field somewhat warm too. So it's a, that was just again, that was, that was there, that was his pet project. He was just passionate about it and did a great job with it.
Further composting toilets in the, uh. The middle school.
Well, that's my daughter.
We've been thinking too small. John, I wanted to, um. Sort of. One of the things that we've been talking a lot about, um, on the board level, and then we've been talking a little bit about on the committee level. Is also incorporating some of the projects that staff are interested in doing. Uh, and I was, I know that this is something that you're not ready to present or bring forward to the board, but I was wondering if you could just talk like very, very. High level about like what some of those are.
So there's been, there's been interest in any number of things. I would say one thing that we've talked about for a long, long time. Is a, uh, an early childhood center. That is a really popular discussion. Lauren and I worked with the group several years ago. To look into the feasibility of that, that's sort of a one of the big ideas that's out there. Other projects that are sort of. Have been discussed or added, doing an addition at the Cushing School. Which would include an art music space. And possibly a pre K space down there to sort of reclaim some of the space. Uh, that was taken over when the fifth grade came back to the elementary schools. So there are all kinds of things that, you know, I think. We could compile a really, really large list. And I think it might be interesting to do that in terms of looking at a. You know, a 20 year. Facilities plan for the region. Um, really, that would be an awesome discussion for finance and facilities. I mean, we can, we can do things like staff survey and see what. What might be popular amongst the whole list of projects and and gain their ideas from projects as well. One thing that seems to come up again and again. And I think the board received some letters from. Students at Oceanside Middle School was moving toward. Experiential or project based learning. And outdoor learning is extremely popular. I happen to be a big. Proponent of experiential and outdoor learning. So outdoor learning spaces is another. Area that I think a lot of staff would like to see. Developed, um, sort of a shining example of that is the. The garden, uh, over at Thomaston Grammar School. It's an absolutely wonderful program that. Lynn Snow and others have promoted over the years and run. Uh, offers experiential learning and a chance for students to learn how to. Grow veggies and learn about, uh. Learn about husbandry and that and that type of thing over there. So. I think there's some really, really good ideas out there. Our staff always have awesome ideas. So that's just sort of a sampling.
I think the governor mentioned something about gardens at schools in her. In her budget, right?
Yeah, so my my experience with that is kind of long because Troy Howard Middle School had a fantastic. Academy, the garden, the garden academy. Um, with their own greenhouse, their own garden with heirloom seeds. The kids were divided up into different companies. So the composting company, the seed company, the harvest company and so on, and each. Each one had a different little part of the curriculum that went along with that. So, I mean, these, these are the kinds of things. That can be done. And, um, again, I think the the garden at Thomaston Grammar School is an awesome. Awesome example of what can be done for, you know, relatively low cost, but certainly with. Uh, that that garden had contributions by the community, support from the school system and a lot of work. From the teacher involved in that. So. I think, I think opportunities like that are absolutely fantastic.
Okay, Maria, then Carol.
Just, um, two places. There used to be a garden at South School. And what happened to the one at the the high school, the greenhouse, you know, it all got torn down and. I wasn't clear on why that was. It just kind of happened.
There is a garden at South School and they're actually starting to redevelop that whole project and that's actually getting. Getting some progress. I don't know about the high school because, uh, to my knowledge, that must have been before my time.
It was, uh, high school was Panquis or we're not Panquis, it was the, uh, it was the broad reach.
Oh, yes.
It was, it wasn't ours. It was a, it was a. Organization that went out of business and, uh. The building was sold. It was a. We got, we got, we had access to it because a lot of our students used it in the program. But, yeah.
Right. Carol.
Yeah, um. I think there's opportunity. Uh, McDougal Park has a community garden. And I think there might be opportunity for the high school to partner up with them. In terms of, um. A garden project, even if we don't have one directly on the school property. You know, it it, that park is being slowly developed into something pretty special. And I think that that. Presents an opportunity. For partnership. I think we should look into that.
Okay. All right. Pete, anywhere else you want to take us on this? Or are you finished with your? Part of that?
I'm done. I'll just end it with, I did find the contract for electricity. I signed a 40 month contract that ends, uh, on Halloween in 2023. So we do have another. So we're. Almost a year and a half into it. And that rate is just about 5.6 cents a kilowatt hour for all of our. District. I think.
Another year and a half.
Uh, yeah.
That's great.
I think that we, uh, and. I believe that I heard, I heard that the rate right now last night that is being budgeted. Is nine cents or so, nine to 10 cents kilowatt hour. Uh, so. So, so, yeah, so I think we've got, we have, we have time, but that clearly. Time's running out.
So next year's budget will have to accommodate. And increase electricity probably if things are as they are now.
The fiscal 24 budget. We'll have to accommodate that.
That's what I mean. The one we do, we talk about next year. All right. Any other questions for? Pete or Steve?
A quick comment on the, how old are the windows in this in the boardroom?
They're really new, right? We just.
I think those were replaced.
Yeah.
Because they, they seem to be blowing in the wind.
It's windy out.
Yeah.
Close it. Close the window.
The Venetian blind seems to be blowing a little bit.
With that plexiglass up next to it.
I think there's a fan over. I think there's a fan over there because sometimes it gets cold when you sit in that side of the room.
Steve, is there anything you want to add to this discussion? Anything, you know, from your point of view that you think we should know or be thinking about?
No, I think Pete's really got a handle on things and uh uh and no, those windows have not been replaced in the boardroom. So
They haven't? Oh, okay. Right.
More windows to replace.
All right. We all set for this then? If so, then Pete, thank you so much. I know once again, you put a lot of work into uh these presentations. And again, these are things that we should all keep tucked away in our computers sometime for understanding how things work and what we're working on right now. So thank you again for all of your hard work and putting it together. And the application, again, I remember when you did the application last year at some time, I don't I wasn't expecting much. I was like, okay, good, great. Glad you all did the work, you know, and there's a lot of work you guys put into it and the God, let's hope. And then bam, that happened. So it's, it's awesome. It's amazing. Just amazing. Um, okay, so we're gonna move now the last topic for tonight. Uh shouldn't take, I don't think, too long, but I wanted to hear about this. So John, you want to describe the non-aligned uh
Can I interrupt you for a second? Is this a what? Don't, this is not on our a- any, any uh uh agenda item for tonight. I just curious, don't we have to add it to the agenda?
No, 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 no. I added it tonight. It was something we gotta talk about. So John, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, I don't have an exciting presentation like Pete, but I did provide the board with a timetable for the salary and benefit agreements for non-aligned staff. And part of this is statutory. So by Tuesday, March first, twenty twenty two, the principals, directors and supervisors will get a notice of intent to renew their contracts from me. And by statute, that applies to principals. The month of March, the principals, directors and supervisors will negotiate a term of contract for the FY twenty three salary. And non-aligned hourly staff will have the ability to negotiate a rate of pay, if not covered by scale. Some of them have a pay scale. Um, we intend to send the support staff a written reasonable assurance of employment for FY twenty three by April first. And April seventh, the board would receive the non-aligned terms and conditions, rates of pay. Friday, April fifteenth, non-aligned staff will be sent terms and conditions with superintendent's signature. And then Monday, May second will be the due date for all staff to return appropriate paperwork for FY twenty three. This is actually the process that we use for directors and supervisors prior to the principals dissolving their bargaining unit and joining the non-aligned staff to negotiate with the superintendent. Prior to that, uh over two years ago, the principals, assistant principals, and I believe the A D were actually a bargaining unit who negotiated salaries and contracts with the board. Um and then they in cut in discussions with the board negotiating team, they dissolved that collective bargaining unit and then now a part of non-aligned staff. Subject to your questions.
And I'll just, I'll just add that, you know, we we kind of, you know, with the with the uh principals and A D uh kind of disbanding their unit. And with COVID over the next two years and with the death of our HR director at this, around the same time, this, this, we, we got out of practice of doing this properly. And we, we really, you know, it it put us in a in a place where we ended up kind of negotiating after the fact, after the budgets were done, you know, the the whole idea is to make sure we get this done before the budget is is formally approved uh as best we can. Granted, there's, there's position changes, there's people changes, so it's not perfect, but the uh the process you know, like John said before uh before, was to do it this way uh and then present these amounts in a spreadsheet, which I forgot to send a sample copy of uh to the board. But we're just get, we're just kind of putting back to what we should be, should have been doing all along and we got off the track.
And again, as John said, on April seventh of this year, anyway, we will receive uh what he's worked out uh so that we know, we'll do that executive session um because we're not going to do uh talk about people and their salaries and everything in a public meeting. So obviously, it's all public information. If anybody wants to get it, they can go ahead and ask for it. But we're going to do this properly and respectfully with our staff. Obviously, non-aligned means these are people who are not covered by contracts. We have two major contracts. We get them done, we sign them, we approve them, we sign them. Uh these are with the people who are not covered under those contracts.
Then they're all employees at will. So there is no contract, there are, there are no contracts with them, their terms and conditions. So that's why there'll be a, the information is public once both sides agree to the contract. Uh we tend not to disclose that when they're in the middle of being negotiated.
Yep. Thank you. Kelly.
Is this the same group of people that, you know, there was some negotiation in the fall and Chelsea had brought up? It would be nice to have that in the spring. Is this the same group that we're doing in the spring? Okay, great.
Yep. Yep. Which is why, you know, I think it's great that we have this process and we're just simply reviewing it quickly here as to how it's gonna go. Um and we trust in our executive to do the job he needs to do with his staff within the budget that we gave him. So Chelsea, go ahead.
So I'm glad to see this, this process um back. I think since I've been on the board, we haven't done it this way. And I I think this is a much cleaner way and I really like it. The one thing that, well, I have two things. One is just a question for Pete and then I have a suggestion I'd like to make. Um Pete, what is, does the spreadsheet include like um the last three years of salary, just like we do for budget stuff? Okay.
We've done it through different ways, but uh yes, if the, if the if the person's I try to keep the position there. The people change sometimes in that position, so there there are discrepancies. So I try to, I try to present it in a way that's least confusing. If you see, so we're with a lot of asterisks, you know, the notes, the notes are always the most important part of any document.
All right, that's, that's good because that was what I I wanted. And then, of course, we'll have a list because I don't even know.
It will be a list and it will be, so it's the, so it's the hourly staff and the, and the salary staff, uh you know, everything from, you know, our mechanic is is non-aligned, even though the drivers are part of the contract, our mechanic is not. Some of our admin assistants that work for directors are not part of the bargain unit, but the admin assistants that work in the schools are. Yeah, this is, you know, there's, there's reasons for that. And you know, you know, John's, you know, John's staff is not, my staff is not. So we've tried to you'll, you'll see, and you know, specialized staff in the office is not. Uh so generally, if the, if the director is an online director, then generally their staff that works for them in the office is not aligned. You'll, you'll see all that.
I look forward to the notes. Um the, the suggestion I wanted to make is that, um, it seems like we, so up until this process, we haven't really, until April, we haven't really talked as a board about what the ranges that we want John to negotiate in. And that feels like it puts a lot of pressure on the superintendent to make guesses about what the board wants to do. So I'd like to add in our March meeting, an executive session so that we can sort of hear what John's thinking and give feedback on that and have just a sense of what we're doing before John starts to to negotiate.
I can do that. All right. Thank you, Dave. Get your hand up.
You're muted.
I thought I had unmuted me. All right. Are we gonna include titles and who they, who the people report to in the uh spreadsheet?
Not in the spreadsheet, but we're working on a chart of a uh not chart of accounts, that's not, that's accounting, but
Organizational chart, yes.
Do you know when we'll have that, your timeline?
Uh, I will have it before we get to presenting the terms and conditions of pay to the board. Possibly before then.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Stop giving me workshop topics.
You don't have any more for a long time. Don't worry about it, man.
Only, only a budget, only budget now.
Yeah, yeah, you're going to the budget. That's enough, you know. Yep, 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 yep. Anything else on this? Before we finish up. Okay, they're all wonderful. Appreciate you, every bit of it, every bit of the work you do for our staff and our kids. Oh, Kelly, do you have something?
Not on this topic, but are you ending the meeting?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, is our next board meeting then in person?
Yes, definitely. And if weird happens, we're definitely in person, yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing is, are we going to respond to those letters from the eighth graders in any way?
Yeah, I don't know if John's gonna do it, but I will do it uh directly. You're certainly welcome to that if you want to find their name in the email. But I will be responding to those and some others I got from high school students.
I actually, I actually did respond to the teacher and just uh appreciate it. Just my, on a personal note, I think it's okay for us to do that, assuming that yeah, it's the same way.
Yeah.
I'm gonna send a response myself as well when I, when I, when I get to it. It's on the list.
Great, thank you.
But feel free, all of you, anytime you want. Yep, absolutely. Reach out. Okay, anything else? Seeing none. Have a great evening. See you in a couple of weeks, if not before.
Good night.